Good evening. The time is 5:30 PM on September 9th, and I call this regular Board of Directors meeting to order. Due to safety concerns, the Board of Directors made the decision to move this meeting to a virtual setting. This was not a decision made lightly. As a board, we are committed to providing a safe and respectful environment to listen to public comment. Per state law, the board must provide a location for the public to view tonight's meeting, and all tonight's comments will be virtual. Based on incidents that have occurred over the last few weeks, we felt this was the appropriate response. While we won't go into specific details, we can share that district staff have been subjected to threatening and harassing language in person and online, received emails and phone calls that were intimidating in nature, and in some cases had personal information, including home addresses and photos of their vehicles posted publicly. Staff members have even been harassed when they're at their homes, leading them to involve law enforcement and take steps to protect themselves. Our focus tonight is on continuing the work of the district in a safe, respectful, and constructive way, and to always represent the best interests of our students and families. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Director Gronwald has our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, President Willemsden. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples in the Calwic tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Second. Director Boeknager moves to adopt the agenda as presented, seconded by Director Perkins, on favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have quite a few people signed up for public comment tonight. We will call your name in the order you have signed up to speak, and our IT tech will look for your name and promote you to a panelist to address the board. You will have three minutes to address the board, and a timer will display on the webinar screen. We ask that comments be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and not to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker clarifying question or follow up on an issue raised during public comment at a later time. After an hour of comments, the board will take a five-minute recess. Because we have a number of comments today, and because we're virtual, at three minutes, the speaker will be muted, and we will move on to the next speaker. The first person in our list is Wendy Van Valkenburg. I see that Ms. Van Valkenburg is present. We're just waiting to connect. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Van Valkenburg, and I've proudly served as a sped paraeducator at Ellsworth for the past four years. I'm also a mother to three amazing kids in this district. I'm here tonight because, to be honest, I am exhausted, frustrated, and livid. In my role, I teach math, reading, writing, and social emotional learning skills to students in grades K through 5. I'm responsible for running numerous small groups independently throughout the school day. To give you perspective, last year I led 10 different groups during my six-hour workday. Over my years at Ellsworth, I have worked with highly dysregulated students, conducted room clears, and spent countless hours supporting students who have eloped, encouraging them back to class. I know the names, family details, personalities, quirks, behaviors, triggers, trauma histories, favorite foods, hobbies, and IEP goals of 14 to 16 students every year. I give them high fives, I dab them up, I laugh with them, and truthfully, I spend a lot of time away from work worrying about them. I hold high standards and expectations while meeting students with love and respect. I haven't even mentioned the physical risks or injuries associated with this job, because frankly, there isn't enough time. And for all this, the expertise, the emotional labor, and the exposure to aggressive behaviors pair in this district average $28,000 a year. Most of my coworkers work at least one additional job just to make ends meet. Yet, in 2024, your COO received a raise that exceeds what most parents make an entire year. The district cannot continue to claim an affordable, sustainable budget while hiring lawyers to fight unions during strikes, giving raises and bonus to administrators who already make nine to 10 times what paras do, and paying temp agencies more money to fill positions you fail to retain. I urge you to look at your para-retention rate. It's abysmal. At the end of the day, we should not be made to suffer for the district's inability to balance a budget. I am exhausted, not because of my students or the many responsibilities I juggle daily, but because I have had to walk the picket line with my coworkers to prove that we are worth more than poverty wages. I'm tired of explaining to my children why our district preaches equity while treating classified staff as expendable. I pour my heart and soul into this job every day, and I have nothing to show for it. Most of all, I'm exhausted because I have to be here tonight to convince you guys that paras are essential to a safe, healthy, and successful school district, and we deserve dignity and a living wage. To be honest, we're doing work most of you would be unwilling or unable to do. While district leaders sit in offices inventing new buzzwords for professional development and drawing six-figure salaries, we are out here supporting our most vulnerable and challenging students. The pay gap and hypocrisy are unacceptable. Pay us what we're worth and show us the respect we deserve as educators. Give us a fair contract now.
Thank you. The next speaker is Adam Aguilera.
Dear Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Maloney, my name is Adam Aguilera, and I'm a teacher in Evergreen Public Schools. I want to address the Evergreen School Board's decision to change the school board meeting from in-person to virtual at the last minute due to safety concerns. The board has held contentious in-person meetings during strikes and budget cuts for years. Tonight, the public is still allowed to gather in the boardroom where they are meeting safely, while the board hides behind computer screens. This isn't about safety, it's about avoiding accountability. We are here virtually because this board refuses to face its constituents after delaying the school year by 10 days. If the board was concerned about our safety, they would have settled a fair contract long ago because it is the PSE classified staff, Evergreen educators, students, and families who have been risking their safety out there on the streets every day, facing the public and being accessible, while the district's bargaining team has been hiding in their air-conditioned offices all day. I also want to call out the board for allowing the district to publicly lie in communicating to Evergreen families. Let's look at an example. On September 7th, the district posted a timeline of when they responded to proposals from the PSE union. The management bargaining team claimed they sent a counterproposal, but multiple times, the district sent back a counterproposal within three to four minutes within their own timeline. There is no way the district management read through, thought about, and deliberated on a full proposal that PSE offered. In fact, the PSE bargaining team corrected the record to say the district's bargaining team was only responding with "no." "No" is not a counterproposal. No wonder Evergreen management failed to convince the judge yesterday to grant an emergency injunction against PSE workers. The Evergreen School Board needs to understand that their management bargaining team is failing to bargain in good faith under the supervision of Superintendent Maloney. Superintendent... Superintendent Maloney...
Please remember not to address anyone by name.
The superintendent is responsible for supervising the strike. After 10 days, the credibility and reputation of this role has been destroyed in Evergreen Public Schools. When the superintendent is walking into schools where staff are looking at the individuals serving in that role, how are they supposed to have the trust and confidence to be able to continue in this school year? The only redemption at this point is to realize that the role the superintendent needs to address, the corrupt district managers, who have their own personal scandals, and to change the profiteering lawyers and choose to clean house and form a new management team who is going to work with the superintendent to rebuild trust and collaboration within the Evergreen School District. Otherwise, we just expect to announce by the end of the school year that we'll have a rotating superintendent choosing on to pursue other career opportunities. Let's hope that the superintendent is here for the right reasons. School Board Superintendent, show leadership, settle a fair contract.
Thank you. Next speaker is Catherine Bennett.
My name is Catherine Bennett, and I'm a parent of two children at Ilahi Elementary. This is not only my first time speaking at a board meeting, this is my first time attending a board meeting. I am not an employee in the district, but I have volunteered in my children's classrooms, field trips, art discovery. I've met with teachers, the principal, and the school counselor at various times. I voted for the levy this year, which, by the district's own website, said it would go to support paraeducators and others who directly teach and care for my children. I am invested and involved in my kids' education, and I am disappointed in the delay to the start of school. But the PSE strike is not harming my children. I am more disappointed in the lack of ethical leadership that I have seen these past two weeks. My groceries have almost doubled in the past three years, and I worry about the staff who are represented by the union in the strike. What would a good leader do right now? If while looking ahead, you project that there is not enough money to give cost-of-living adjustments for the lowest-paid employees, why would a good leader decide to give themselves an even larger raise earlier this year? If the district can only spend a dollar once, surely it is best spent prioritizing the employees who directly interact with students and for whom that dollar would make the most impact. Why would we pay negotiators a bonus for dragging out negotiations two years ago? Doesn't that incentivize the same situation we find ourselves in? This isn't the first time that our process for negotiation has been contentious and broken down. My oldest child is about to enter third grade, and this is his second strike. And if nothing changes in the district's bargaining team, we can expect yet another next year. This board has chosen to attempt to strong-arm employees back to work rather than to try to address their underlying concerns. In deciding what to say tonight, I was feeling rather hopeless. What could I say that hasn't already been said? So I decided to just speak the truth. I am baffled by the decisions this board has made this year. I am disappointed by the misleading communication from the district, and I am mistrustful of the district's so-called bargaining team as they seem to receive incentives from dragging out negotiations. Please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mindy Crawford Cooper.
There we go. Okay, sorry about that. Good evening. I had a very different speech prepared for you tonight, but I will make that one when I can look you in the eyes when you aren't hiding behind computer screens. Tonight, I will be telling you about some of the events that transpired yesterday. One of your directors chose to make racial slurs against one of my members. You turned on your sprinklers for three hours in the middle of the day to get the members wet. What are you doing? Do you think that that shows respect? It's actually assault. This shows more about you than it does about us. I would also ask you, where is your positive intent? Was that being kinder than necessary? How did that serve? And please explain how that was culturally responsive in your leadership. You think you were being threatened and intimidated, but let me tell you, you are the people, or I'm sorry, you and the people you trust are guilty of these actions and so much more. And then, as we're waiting for your meeting tonight, you tell our members we have reached a TA. That has not happened, and that is one more oops on your behalf, which is also another unfair labor practice. Please, for the love of God, do better. I am.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sean Gunder.
Hi, I actually emailed at about 11:50 AM this morning, so I think I should be toward the end of the list to speak, so I would be happy to defer and wait until I'm at my appropriate place in line.
Would you please mind just speaking now? Since we can just go on list, everybody will have a chance to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do you mind if I...
Don't go. Go somewhere else, please.
Thank you. Hi, sorry. Thank you. My name is Sean Gunder, and I am a teacher in EPS. At multiple board meetings, the board heard testimony from some of their lowest-paid employees that it's a regular practice in this district for them to work off the clock. Whether this practice is intentional or not, it seems to be system-wide. And in other industries, this is called wage theft, and the employer would be held responsible for maintaining this. This should have been cause for the board to take serious and immediate action, and to do anything other than that makes the board complicit in a morally reprehensible practice. To make plans to withhold pay of your lowest-paid workers and then to pay them back over the course of the year while that money accrues interest for the district and loses value for the worker would rightly be considered wage theft as well and is also morally reprehensible. It crossed the line that I think that this board is complicit in. Last year, the board heard options for closing schools to right-size the district. It's my understanding that the money that closing select schools could save would have easily closed the financial gap in proposals during the current contract negotiations. Instead, the board deferred consideration of this into an unknown and uncertain future. As leaders of the third-largest employer in the county and as elected governance, this board has a duty to act. Any newer board members or future board members should know that effective governance does not rely on sacrifice of morality, that the culture of this board and this district are not set in stone. This board took vocal steps over the last two years to listen and learn, but not steps to take action or repair harm. This isn't an issue of sides or disputes. Many years ago, I sat in the room while EPS board discussed about the distinction between intent versus impact. So I know that you have the knowledge to understand the following. There is real damage done to the Evergreen community that this board is complicit in. The community deserves amends. The community deserves a governance that can act. I know that tensions are high right now, but I want you to understand this clearly. None of what I'm sharing here is settled once these negotiations close. I personally didn't become a teacher to shepherd the decline of public education, and I expect the same is true of the board.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Goldman. Rebecca is on. We're just waiting for her connection. Thank you. Rebecca is on. We're just waiting for her connection. Thank you. Rebecca, you're muted. Do you have the mute button on the bottom?
Jackie, maybe we could go back to Rebecca after the next person.
All right. Rebecca, I promise we'll... We'll go to the next person and try to come back. The next person on our list is Shmea Potter. Let's see if this one works.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Shmea Potter. I'm a parent in this district, a community member, and someone who is deeply tired of the nonsense families like mine are forced to deal with. I came to speak to you, the board, the district, the one saying there's no budget for fair wages. But what you're really asking for is more than that. What we're really asking for is more than that. We're asking that you give compensation that matches the time, energy, and care these workers give. We're asking for support during the busiest, most critical moments, bus drop-offs, classroom transitions, kids who need extra help. We're asking for staff to be protected when they show up for students. And when something does happen, we're asking for them to be taken care of, not tossed aside. In short, we're asking for safe schools. I'm just trying to understand. We've got money for lawyers, for admin bonuses, to silence the people keeping schools afloat, but no money for the people watching our kids, supporting classrooms, helping the nurse, transporting students, watching halls and playgrounds, giving students the help they need, and cleaning up the messes you guys like to leave behind. Make it make sense. Nearly $500,000 in legal fees in six months, and $105,000 in February alone, and an injunction against workers asking for basic dignity. And now you're passing out flyers talking about graphic images and hate speech. Like, these workers, these parents, these community members are one protest away from chaos. Clearly, you don't think very highly of the community you serve. Be honest, you're not protecting students. You're trying to make yourselves look good. You want us off your property, off the sidewalks, off your radar, but guess what? We're not going anywhere. I wrote a letter to the editor, published with Clark County Today, standing up for what's right, and I got hate. Personal hate. And I'm not the only one. People are getting attacked in comment sections all over just for speaking up, just for pushing back on your misleading emails, like the one that went out earlier. I don't know where these people are from, but I can't help but wonder if Evergreen's gaslighting and spin is what gives these people the nerve to say the things they're saying. You want to silence them. You want to threaten them with legal action. You want me, a parent, to stay quiet and believe the line that you're negotiating in good faith and being kinder than necessary. Well, not today. We see the truth, and you should be embarrassed. You say students first, but when push comes to shove, the only thing first is damage control and making yourselves out to be the victim. You can throw around injunctions and pass out flyers, but you will not stop families from standing up. You will not stop this community from demanding better, and you will not make me believe silence equals safety. We're watching, we're showing up, and we're not backing down. History has its eyes on you. Have the day you deserve.
Thank you. Let's try going back to Rebecca Goldman. Is Rebecca still connected? We'll move on to Joshua Furtado.
One comment before you start the timer. I know there's comments to change your name. I was not able to change my name or view my name until I became a panel member, so I don't know if the tech person can provide instruction about how to do that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joshua Furtado. I'm a licensed mental health and substance use therapist. I am a parent of a student in the district, and I'm a community member. Me and my son have lived in the area since 2017. My son is current student at Pacific Middle School and has been in Evergreen District since kindergarten. The school staff have supported my son through many challenges. It wasn't the superintendent or the board members who supported my son. It was the counselors, the teachers, and the support staff. The bus driver last year picked my son up from the front of our house because they were the only person at our bus stop. I am concerned that this is the third strike in Evergreen. In 2018, when my son entered first grade, there was a teacher's strike that lasted six days. In 2023, sixth grade was delayed by a strike that lasted eight days, which was a fortunate and unfortunate thing for my son. As of writing this, the 2025 strike has lasted over at least 10 days, and I'm concerned that it continues to go on. Evergreen is the largest district in the county, serving over 22,000 students. Every year, there are issues that impact the students, staff, and families, including bullying, harassment, intimidation, threats of violence, and other safety concern, including school lockdowns. We need assurance from the Board of Education, who are elected officials who represent all the voters, including the superintendent. As a resident of the community, I voted for this board to maintain my interests, as well as those of the schools, and especially my son and other students at their schools. I am insulted and offended by the bullying and intimidation tactics enacted by the superintendent and the Board of Education. My public bargaining and sharing private information regarding the bargaining process is being used to sow discontent and create a rift between the families and union members. These tactics were employed during previous negotiations and in other districts in the county. It is hard to maintain my job and be a single parent for my child who needs their education. School employees are served fair contracts, including wages. There are many more aspects to negotiations than just salary increases and cost of living increases. Cost of living increases that were afforded by the state. Public safety, work hours, class sizes, and other factors impact education and student success. Education standards and engaging materials that ensure students progress into higher education and future employment, not just sports. Parents and students need assurances that this district will engage in fair and equitable negotiations now and in the future. Educators know that they will not have perfect jobs. None of them have set the intent to strike. They know how this negatively impacts students and families and their own livelihoods. We need to focus on integrity within the community. I just have one more sentence. Within the community and protect the community from further strikes, not by threatening the legality of strikes and vilifying the educators for exercising their rights to free speech, but by having fair and equitable negotiation tactics free from bullying, harassment, and intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Rebecca Goldman is back. Thank you, Rebecca.
Hi there. Thank you so much for waiting for me. I need to apologize for my public comment last week when I addressed you all like you were a bunch of children. I realize now that I shouldn't have assumed a neurotypical audience. I'm a special needs mom, so I should really know better. I'm gonna try some strategies I use to help my young kids play nicely with friends who have different needs and abilities. High school board friends! High school board friends, hi EPS admin friends. Oh, what's wrong? Are you feeling scared? Is that why you didn't want to come today? Oh yeah, I know. It's hard for you when friends don't follow the rules. Well, it's not illegal, it's unlawful. And sometimes there's a difference between what's legal and what's moral. And our PSE friends are striking because they have a moral responsibility to stand up for themselves and their students. Okay, yes, the rules, I hear you, friends. There are other rules we have to follow too. Did you know our PSE friends sometimes have to help students onto the bus after their shifts end? Legally, they should be paid for that time. But they can't just leave the students unattended, it's not safe. Did you know that when a student has an IEP, their school is legally required to provide the services listed in that IEP? Sometimes, when friends play together, we play games where different sides have different rules, like hide and seek, okay? Some rules are explicit, like you can't peek while the hiders are hiding, that's not fair. Some are implicit. If you're a seeker, you have to actually look, not just pretend, or look for a few minutes and then go home, can't do that. You can't say you want to play hide and seek with a thousand people and then not give them enough time or a big enough room to play. Those things really hurt your friends' feelings and make them not want to play with you. I know it can be so hard to play with friends. Some friends struggle with reading social cues or dealing with uncertainty. Some friends have a hard time staying focused, or they get too focused on one thing. Some friends need extra time to process information and understand what another friend is trying to say. Maybe our brains work differently, but our hearts work the same. We feel bad when people are hurting. We value fairness and honesty. Even when we don't agree with our friends, we care about them in our hearts because we're a community. That is how we get success for each belonging for all. Okay, wow, that was really hard. Maybe we should pay our special education workers a living wage. Thank you. All done. All done.
Thank you. Next person on our list is Claire Curtis.
Can I ask a question before my time starts?
The board can't engage in conversation.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we go. You can't claim to have been bargaining in good faith with the PSE large group, that is far from the truth. You have had since March to negotiate with the union and have waited until now to come to the table, putting unnecessary pressure on the union and on the community. You say that the strike is unlawful, that is again not factual. Strikes are protected by the National Labor Relations Act as long as the strike is for acceptable reasons, which the PSE strike is, a strike against unfair wages and unsafe working conditions. You state that parents could continue to work as negotiations continue, but you have lost the trust of the union. Three years ago, the parents had the option to strike but didn't take it in hopes that the negotiations would continue. With the pressure and attention taken off negotiations, few changes were made and parents didn't get the raise they deserved. You say that there are budget shortfalls, but you have yet to make cuts at the district level. Administration hasn't been fired, salaries haven't been cut, raises haven't been diminished or stopped at the district level. In fact, members of the district officers earn as much in a single month as a parent educator earns in a year. Yet you continue to cut, underpay, disrespect these vital student-facing staff. You also handed out questionable supplemental contracts of $31,000 to individuals during the teacher's strike of 2023. That would be enough to pay a parent and a half for a year. You refused to sign a document that stated that there would not be supplemental contracts this time. Simple way of starting to regain trust. You also kept a certain district official in their current job. We are no longer uninformed and unorganized. We as parents, parents, community, and teachers are watching you. My question for you is, how have the people at the district, how have members of the board directly influenced a student in our district? You probably haven't. If you ask a student to name an inflammatory person in their life, I promise they will not name you. They will name their favorite teacher, the parent educator who helps students with special needs, which are protected by the IDEA, the kitchen staff who feed our children so their brains are ready to learn, the playground and security staff who keep our children safe, the bus drivers who ensure equitable access to transportation to and from school, maintenance crews that keep our schools clean and functioning, the library staff that teaches our kids a love of books, and many others that I'm sure I've forgotten. The power is in your hands to provide a well-paid and safe environment for our essential staff and rebuild trust with the community and the union. Please take this seriously. We want to be back at school, we want our children to learn and become an educated populace. But that is not possible if you will not negotiate. Do your job! Get back to the table and get us back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Olivia Davis. We'll hold on another second while we try to connect. Let's try moving ahead to Derek Systema.
Systema, but good try. Oh, you're fine, I appreciate you. Good evening. My name is Derek Systema, Special Education Parent Educator in Evergreen Public Schools. We are now in our third week on the strike line, not out of want, but necessity. Before I came to education, I spent 15 years in retail. And if there's one thing you learn in corporate America, it's the difference between controllable and uncontrollable erosion. In regards to retention, uncontrollable erosion is what no company can prevent. Employees retire, or pass, move away, or completely change careers. In schools, that looks like a bus driver who passes, a pro tech who earns a degree outside education, or a parent who finishes their teaching credential and moves into a certified role. Those losses are expected, they're natural. But controllable erosion is another story entirely. Controllable erosion is when you drive your own people away. When bus drivers leave Evergreen to drive in neighboring districts. When mechanics leave to work for C-Trans because the pay is better and the respect is greater. When parent educators cross district lines for the same job because the conditions are fairer elsewhere. That is not an accident, it is a failure of management. Right now, Evergreen is bleeding talent because it refuses to invest in the employees who keep kids safe on buses, support them in classrooms, maintain the buildings, and provide the stability that education requires. Abraham Lincoln once said, "Labor is prior to and independent of capital. Capital is the only fruit of labor and could never have existed if labor had not first existed." Yet Evergreen has chosen to prioritize capital over labor, executives over staff, and in doing so, has forgotten its foundation. I must say, I'm not mad. I'm disappointed. Because this is not just a financial failure, it's a moral one. I'm disappointed that a superintendent who asserts mentalities of be kinder than necessary and assume positive intent would allow inflammatory rhetoric to be sent out under her name. I'm disappointed that belonging for each success for all has become belonging for the silent success for few. Three years ago, classified staff worked under an expired contract for half of the school year. We gave grace then, hoping for reciprocity now. Instead, we're told that we can again work on an expired contract. Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. We remember, and we refuse to go back down that road. Frederick Douglass reminded us, "Power concedes nothing without a demand." It never did and it never will. We have demands for dignity, for respect, for the safety afforded by a properly-staffed classroom, and the timeliness afforded by properly-staffed transportation. For our time to be respected by being paid for every minute we work, always. Dr. Maloney speaks of her five mindsets to be led by, "I too have a maxim that I live by, in all that you do, above all else, do good." I have one more sentence, "It is deceptively difficult, as often doing good is the hardest thing, even more often though the hardest thing is the right thing." So tonight, I implore you, do the right thing. Thank you for your time and your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Let's go back to Olivia Davis. Are we able to get Olivia Davis on?
Just as a note here, I was asked to unmute, I think that was probably misdirected.
Come back to Ms. Davis. Next person on our list is Louis Bernard. I don't believe that.
I don't believe Louis Bernard's been in the meeting.
He's not on, okay, thank you. We'll come back to Mr. Bernard. Our next speaker is Robin Bowman.
Hi, my name is Robin Bowman, I'm an Evergreen parent. I'm not an employee, I'm not related to one. I'm just one of the thousands of households who rely on your schools and we're gamely adjusting to these abrupt, ongoing cancellations. I have a second-grade son. He loves Legos and making up silly songs, and being a second grader means two of his three years of big kid school have failed to launch on time. Next year could be three out of four for this kid. I don't want to be here speaking to you tonight. Last time around, I just put my head down and toughed it out. This time, I'm here to share the optics from this side of Parent Square. I have little interest in how union negotiations work, what the pay scales are, or trying to decipher who's being unreasonable today. That's not my job. Highly compensated employees are in place to run this district, and I don't know them. But if I was in charge of an event that 20,000 people and their families were planning around, I wouldn't wait until days before to secure critical staff. I wouldn't count on that staff showing up even if I hadn't worked out what to pay them or addressed their safety and employment concerns. That seems breathtakingly arrogant or maybe inept, and someone probably deserves to be removed from their role. Union members on hourly pay don't owe my child an education. The buck doesn't stop with them. The buck, lots of bucks, it seems like, stop with the superintendent and the negotiators. They control the money and they could have solved this months ago. School boards are not directly involved in day-to-day management, but you ensure basic priorities and accountability, and you advocate for the students' best interest. Please, push for removal of ineffective C-suite employees. Reject misaligned financial incentives and condemn this outright administrative failure. This strike is Evergreen's canary in the coal mine. It's an alert that we risk losing desperately needed and valuable personnel due to pay and safety concerns. Replacing them would be even more costly, if even possible, so it's time to work with what we have. What we cannot afford, neither financially nor from a morale and personnel perspective, is the administration's ongoing failure, waste, and lack of urgency. That's the view from the home front. Thanks.
Thank you. Going back to see if Matthew Clare or Louis Bernard are on. Or if Olivia Davis is able to unmute.
Matthew Clare is joining now.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure we have a connection. Good evening, all. My name is Matthew Clare, my wife works for you guys, and like any husband, I just couldn't sit by and say nothing when I see people around me that are hurt, it makes me want to advocate for them. I just want to start by saying that everything I really, I believe in being proactive and not reactive, so everything I really want to share with you guys goes beyond three minutes, as I'm a pastor. So I have emailed you the thought-out things I wanted to say to you guys. I don't want to, I believe in never making big decisions when emotions are high, and there's a lot of high emotions around right now. So this, in my three minutes, I just wanted to show up because I didn't want to just no-show, but the bulk of what I have to say, I pray you don't power delete and stuff, is you probably have 500 emails like I do and the role I have, and that you would take time to really just digest those. I work and I learned going through seminary, and when I heard Simon Sinek say that leaders eat last. And that changed me through my bachelor's and master's degree in seminary to be bivocational, so that I could support my family with two working hands as well as be able to do ministry completely free because I believe in servant leadership. I also believe that you do at the core of your board decisions because you don't become a board member to get rich. Obviously, you guys have other bivocational things that you do as well, obviously, to take care of your own families, and I respect that. You guys got a heavy burden, and my heart truly goes out to you guys as well. However, I've worked for Fortune 50 as well as Fortune 10 companies. And I could tell you that what this really comes down to, you guys, is in your roles, is really understanding the dynamic that comes through taking care of your frontline. When you take care of your frontline people, they will take care of you. Sir Richard Branson said it best with the way he runs his business regime. And I really think that, to get really down to the brass roots of it, you guys really need to take a look at really not just offering pennies to people in the industry I work in, a $53 billion company. We as leaders get paid less than our frontline, and they know it, and we get crapped on all the time, to be honest with you. Because you don't get in these roles as a leader to get rich. And I know the parents aren't, you know, many of them have other jobs too, no one's looking to get rich, they're just asking for more than just meager crumbs. And I just know that from the sacrifices that they give day in and day out, and the frustrations that they endure, that I hope that the leadership here at the district really wants to take care of their frontline. Because when you take care of them, truly, I will say it again, they will take care of you and they take care of these kids.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clare, you've exceeded your three minutes. Thank you. Going back to see if Olivia Davis can connect. And if not, Louis Bernard.
Louis is here, can you hear me or see me?
Yes.
Bear with me. Hi, I'm Louis Bernard, thank you for your time this evening. Last month, I attended a school board meeting in which Jennifer, the CFO, gave some startling statistics up on the.
To remind you not to address people by name if possible, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The CFO last month gave a projection on the. The CFO last month gave a projection on the slide screen that indicated some startling information that was a shock to me. But specifically, she mentioned the 10-year decline in student enrollment, approximately. Now, that's a pretty interesting number, because if my memory serves me correctly, seven years ago, there was a school board levy or bond measure to rebuild schools. And so, as a taxpayer and as a parent, I'm asking myself, why are we investing so heavily in new school buildings when we have decline in revenue? Secondly, 10 years is the collective average of three of the senior current board members. And so, when I view this landscape from a parent perspective, from a taxpayer perspective, and also as a candidate, as you all know, I'm running for position five in this fall's election, I have to ask myself, what in the heck is going on here? Now, I certainly understand that the problems that the district is facing today and now didn't arrive here overnight. And I certainly understand that these problems aren't going to be resolved overnight. So I don't want to comment specifically on the negotiations between the striking parties and the district, as many others have already commented on that. But there is one thing that I would like to ask the board, and that is, would you please put a freeze on hiring and adjusting any other compensation nondiscretionary outside of these negotiations until after the elections? And what I mean by that is, let's show a sign of good faith by the district to the striking staff, that there's no backdoor financial shenanigans happening. And secondly, let's allow the outcome of the elections this fall and the next two months. In the event there are two new board members that can replace some of this decisions that have brought this district to this point. So I'm asking each of you, the superintendent and the board members, would you be in agreement with that statement and request, and would you honor that? In addition to that, to those watching, if you believe in change, as I believe in change, then please vote this fall for Bernard for Evergreen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Allen.
Good evening, and my name is Jamie Allen. I'm a parent in Evergreen Public Schools. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. My son was all ready and excited to begin kindergarten this year. The strike and the uncertainty of when school will start is very hard on him. He's anxious about school, and he asks me often when school will start. After the open house, he was in the school mindset. But now, after a significant delay, I worry how he will fare when school starts. I'd like to also add that I have a son with a disability who isn't getting the services that he so desperately needs. For families like mine, the delay is creating a real financial and professional strain. I'm paying for daycare I did not plan for, and I have requested multiple days off so I can be present for when school finally begins. I don't want to miss his first day of school, because I have to be at work, and I can't take the day off. And that's stressful for me as a parent, and also is putting pressure on my workplace as well. I really hope the board and union can work together towards a resolution quickly. But if not, please call in a mediator to help get this, help get the kids back to school, get some stability, families can have certainty, and the staff can feel valued and supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Camille Lomen.
Hi, um, so after that press release just went out about, from the district, about the TA, without any knowledge of the of the union, apparently, does the board truly believe that the district is bargaining?
Three, that's right. In fact, there are about a dozen people inside watching this meeting.
Is the new, did you hear that? There's like news or something. Anyway, with the injunction not even scheduled to be heard until Thursday, what steps is the board taking to ensure genuine proposals are being made, rather than simple rejections labeled as offers? Has the board even reviewed the bargaining timeline that the district keeps putting on the website? And like, and you guys have also referenced in your very templated email responses that you're just sending out without, I don't even know if you're actually reading our emails, to be honest. I don't, I don't feel like you are. Those copy paste responses to community members are disingenuous and very dismissive, and fail to address the specific concerns being raised, and make the board appear disengaged. And this pattern, prioritizing board and district personnel comfort, as we can see tonight, I just had to like go find a room to do my public commenting, because I wanted to be here. Your personal comfort over transparency and authentic engagement is very disappointing and incredibly, not only harmful, but practically just erodes public trust. I've personally been criticized by board members for referencing the community too broadly, yet the board itself makes sweeping claims in recent resolutions, like stating that the strike will cause irreparable harm to everyone. But those comments didn't stop me. And now that attorneys and lawmakers and others have approached me and others in the community about how vital myself and others have been, and can be to create real change in K-12 public education, perhaps there's more merit to our community's advocacy than the board is willing to admit, especially by your twist to not appear in person tonight. So at this point, I guess if you can't beat them, join them. Or in this case, beat them and then join them? See you up there or here, because I'll be here in 2027, running against, in District Two. So further, beyond just being confused by the board's decision to move tonight's meeting to the strictly virtual format, I also want to bring attention to the fact that it's not just PSE who are in contentious negotiations. It's also the EAA, the Evergreen Administrative Association. They haven't received raises. They had an MOU last year just to get through the year, and they're still fighting with the district. Does the district bargaining team have a good relationship with any labor partner? Based on track record? I'll let you make that decision. Pretty jumbled up, based on everything going on. There was like echoes and everything in this. And but right now, the district exceeded its 1,000 licenses for Zoom.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Furtick.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Furtick, and my four children graduated through EPS. For the last few years, it feels like we've been on perpetual loop of the princess bride, where every time we turn around, we hear the words "good faith," "bargaining," "checks and balances," "value," "legal," "clear and timely communication." And I've lost count of how many times I've said out loud, "you keep using those words. I do not think they mean what you think they mean, only it's anything but funny or entertaining. It is absurdity. I'm especially appalled at the example district leadership is showing our students. Dishonesty, distortion, manipulation, and abuse of the figurehead of leadership and its communications with the public through both broad and personal statements, which have selectively and strategically misrepresented bargaining efforts on both good faith efforts of the district and reported disinterest of the union. I'm truly astounded that our leadership would both represent yourselves and the image of the district in such an unprofessional manner. Is this truly what you want to be modeling and the traits you hope our children aspire to cultivate? True leadership serves and does not distort or manipulate the trust and goodwill of those it serves. This is not Wolves of Wall Street. This is our students and your community who vote both for their board and to pass or fail those crucial levies. Leadership is an example of character, integrity, and ethics. Your names are attached to these communications. Do you truly want the district to be proud of this example? Are you personally proud of this example? Are you counting on the same blind trust of the community that is given to trusted experts, that you wouldn't possibly abuse the position of communicating accurate and neutral information? And wouldn't you say your whole district being shut down because your employees can't afford to work for you is an emergency you should address? How can you justify those ROUSs, raises of unusual size, to top-tier positions while you continue to lowball the staff whom you say your schools cannot safely and effectively be run without? And once again, in a truly ironic transparency to say publicly that you couldn't guarantee your bargaining team wouldn't receive extra bargaining money for working a weekend? How crystal clear were the priorities of spending are? And just because you say you can legally, which is in question at times, you do something, doesn't mean you can or should ethically in this bleak financial climate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Doyle.
There we go. Hi, I'm Nancy Doyle, and I am a parent in the district. And my grandson is next to me, because he also has signed up to speak as a student, Gavin Astles. And what I want to say is that the district is in jeopardy. And I mean that in a big way. I am backing up. I'm hearing parents and community members, literally by the dozens, seeking other districts at this point. And it's because of the continued inability of the district to open schools on time, have students attend school on time. We've had all these delays, which you guys have heard repeatedly tonight. But it's just, it's just ended up giving the district really a bad name in so many ways. And I think that's sad, because one of the reasons why we are having our grandson attend this district is because of the diversity. There is a lot of diversity. He's also attended CAMA schools, which is an excellent school district, does not have the diversity that Evergreen does. And there's absolutely no reason, I mean, zero reason, why schools should be closed at this point. The very, very first week, I was very hopeful that the board and administrators would settle this. You should have settled this, by the way, because it's on you at this point that you're keeping the schools closed and are not agreeing to the negotiation points. They're not asking for a huge amount, these paraeducators. And you have some very, very excellent paraeducators and certified staff in the district. So I am pleading with you. The district, again, is on the downside because of all these delays and because of the very real sense that there's just, you know, arguments and mudslinging going back and forth. Again, our kids need to be in school, and I'm going to turn this over to my grandson, Gavin Astles.
Hello, as you know, I am the grandson of Nancy Doyle, who was just speaking. And my personal opinion, though I am just a student and don't know much, is that the district's gross negligence has led to this repeated delay. And I would like to bring up a personal example of how this affects students specifically and especially. I was separated from my siblings at around eight years old, and I rarely get to see them. In the summer is basically the only time I get to see them. Because of this strike and the typical, like, seven-day snow day, seven days of snow days in February that we've consistently gotten for the past three years, I truly believe that I'm really not going to have any, sorry, I'm not going to be able to spend much time with them. Also, my grandparents have worked for over 30 years as educators, and now they are happily retired. I personally would not want their hard-earned tax money to go to what is essentially a war of attrition at this point. Who can hold out the longest? I don't see the point in continuing this, and I truly believe that it is almost completely the district's fault. I really don't see a point in continuing this. And like my grandma said, they're really not asking for much. And I, as I've gone to Evergreen schools, I've seen so much money wasted on stuff that could have been spent on paying our classified staff, like the, what, like 15 TVs that display the school logo constantly? That's just at the school I go to. Imagine all the other schools, including elementary, high school, and also middle school, which is, of course, where I go. I think it's, quite frankly, very ridiculous. The gross misuse of the budget in Evergreen is, as stated, ridiculous, when we could be using it to pay for our incredibly important classified staff who have helped me and many of my friends throughout the years. Additionally, I've already had many friends tell me that they either know people who are unenrolling from Evergreen currently, thinking about it, or are themselves, as in thinking about or currently unenrolling in Evergreen. If this continues, that number's just going to soar, and not just soar, it's going to skyrocket. And I'm passing this over to my grandfather again.
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you very much for listening to us. And again, I hope that you're really thinking about, you know, the reputation of the district and the feeling of the community, because I think the community-parent feeling is not necessarily coming through to let the district know we are sad and disappointed in the decisions of the school board and also the...
Thank you. Going back to Olivia Davis.
Hello. Thank you so much for your patience. Technology, I tell you. So my name is Olivia Davis. I am a parent here in the Evergreen School District. And last year was actually my first year working as a paraeducator. I am a sped para in a pre-K class, and I also help out K through five, when we have no school on Wednesdays. And I have a lot that I want to say, but right now, I really just want to lead with kindness. I feel like everybody's been getting beat up on both sides. And instead of talking about everybody else's history, I kind of want to take a little time to talk about my history, because I've been through a lot, and I'm not even from this area. I grew up in northern Idaho. I went to school during No Child Left Behind, where it left a lot of kids behind, unfortunately. And I never thought that I would be working in a classroom because of my personal experiences with school. I didn't have enough adults, even in my own home, there to help, support, and boost me up and encourage me to go to school and be the best person I could be. It was just, you're going to school to get a job one day. So I had a job when I was 15, and then I dropped out by the time that I was 17, because I didn't have enough support. Idaho is not the place that I wanted to grow up, is not the place that I wanted my kids to grow up. So when I found a very good man, I was able to make a family with him. And unfortunately, we lost our firstborn on our due date back in 2016. And his birthday was September 5th. And so, instead of baking cupcakes on his birthday, I was out with people that I work with in my community that I care about. And it's multiple communities that I've been able to connect with through this strike. So thank you for that, I guess, if I'm going to thank you for a strike, because I've gotten to know a lot of amazing people who truly care about the job that they do. Our little boy would be turning nine. He'd be going into third grade. He's got a little sister who's going into second grade. He's got a little brother who's going into first grade. There is more going on with these kids and their lives, because it's not just as simple as going to school and then coming home and playing. There's dealing with grieving families, because stillbirth affects 26,000 families in the U.S. every single year. And then families aren't getting paid enough to do a job that they love. I didn't think I was going to be good at the job that I do. And I had people asking me, "are you going to come back tomorrow?" After my first day of work. And my first day stepping foot in a classroom was on Friday, September 13th, last year. I'm a superstitious woman, and so working on Friday, the 13th, in a school scared the crap out of me, because kids today have to worry about being safe from school shootings. I'm terrified to send my kids to school. So I've got a job working in a school so that I can be there, just in case something happens.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Banda. Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Bunda.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Angie Bunda. I have two kids in the school district. I'm going to try something a little different. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. I beg of you, it's time to take a stand. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. Please help our kids, you know, only you can. No funds, you say, yet get your raises and we're supposed to sing your praises. As parents, we will fight and stand our ground. The children need it more than you, the teachers and support staff too will advocate and we will not back down. A culture of toxicity, retaliation and pure greed. The grasp for power makes weak minds feel strong. Silence your staff with policies in hopes that others will not see. Your checks and balances are long since gone. They live in fear and cannot speak out, but I am not afraid to shout and use my voice to say that this is wrong. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. I beg of you, it's time to take a stand. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. Please help our schools, you know, only you can. I'm not the only one who hopes the board can change things with their votes. It's up to you to change your cold, cold hearts. We value our community, cooperation sets us free. You need to lead so that our school can start. Let's come together and be strong to do what's right and fix what's wrong and watch our students and our schools succeed. New trust accountability transparency is what we seek. It's time to stand up and help those in need. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. I beg of you, it's time to take a stand. Evergreen, 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 evergreen. Please help us all, you know, only you can. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a five minute recess and re-adjourn at six forty-eight. Thank you. The time is six forty-eight and the meeting has re-adjourned. Our next speaker is Susan Louder.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Maloney Louder. Evergreen has been a part of my life for decades. I have deep roots in Evergreen Public Schools. I attended Mill Plain, Ellsworth Elementary, Cascade Junior High and Evergreen High School, class of eighty-one. Woo-hoo. And my father even served on this board in the early nineteen sixties. And for the past twenty-three years, I have served this district as both a para educator and a certificated teacher. Evergreen is my history, my family and my livelihood. Since Evergreen has been such a part of my life, I have some very specific memories. One was when I was a fifth grader at Ellsworth Elementary. It was nineteen seventy-three. Evergreen faced its very first strike. I remember it vividly. At just ten years old, I watched my teachers stand up for themselves and for their students. That moment shaped me. It taught me that when rights are denied, when fairness is withheld. People have not just the ability, but the responsibility to stand together. That lesson has never left me. It's why I'm here today. And yet fifty years later, we are still here. Evergreen's history is marked by strikes and each one leaves scars on students, on families, on educators and on this community. Strikes are never entered into lightly. They are a last resort. The result of broken commitments, ignored voices and a lack of respect at the bargaining table. History shows us a pattern. When educators are undervalued, conflict follows. And every day that conflict drags on, students lose, families scramble and trust in leadership erodes. We cannot keep repeating this cycle. We cannot keep forcing children to experience what I experienced at ten years old. Watching their teachers fight for the very basics they need to do their jobs. And when I say teachers, I mean educators in general. That goes for anyone that works in a school. The working conditions of educators are the learning conditions of students. If this board does not respect and support its staff, or if the bargaining team doesn't. Then it is shortchanging every child who walks through any school in Evergreen. This is a turning point. You can choose to repeat the mistakes of the past, or you can choose a path of fairness, respect and stability.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Elias.
Hi, my name is Mary Elias and I'm an academic interventionist at two schools in Evergreen. Recently, I've had some difficult years working for the district. Every time there has been a cut to the intervention program, I get transferred to a different school. I've been at six schools in the last six years. My contract says no more than one school every three years. So I'm not sure how that math works out, but that is my reality. I also had new problems with severe spinal stenosis that required accommodations last year. I had doctor's notes to allow the use of a mobility device that I provided for myself. And I asked for ten minutes added to my travel time in the form of one of my breaks. And because I had to go between Silver Star and Harmony, which is a twenty minute drive. So that I could unload my mobility device and have time to get into the building. I requested separately to have a disabled access button put onto the interior wing doors at Silver Star. And all of that was denied initially by HR and they told me not to report to work. So at that point, after twenty-two years of devoted service to this district and teaching literally hundreds of kids how to read. I was afraid that I might not be allowed to continue to work because I was partially physically disabled. The only reason I was allowed to go back to work was because my principal told the district that the secretaries would open the wing doors for me. When I had to travel through the office to get to my next teaching assignment. I was having to pop over all around the building. I got no relief on my travel schedule, so I had to arrive breathless and in pain every day to Harmony and start teaching the moment I arrived. After the abuse that I've suffered by this district, and I haven't filed any grievances or made a federal case out of anything that kind of think I could. But I haven't yet. I just want you to forgive me if I have no faith in your HR department. And their decision-making abilities and their ability to bargain fairly with this, the PSE Union. So please, please direct your team to finish this bargain, or we need you to try and clean house. If they're really stuck, maybe they can take some of our juice and add a little Miralax to get things moving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trina Stoom. Pardon me for mispronouncing your last name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Trina Stoom. I've been a special ed para educator in the district for twenty years. When I was hired back in two thousand and five, Evergreen School District was the place people wanted to work. Not anymore. It shows in over the eighty open para jobs posted. Why am I still here, you may ask? It's the support from parents of kiddos in our class. If we could vote for the best para in the district, it would be you. Thank you for guiding our son to kindergarten these last two years. I can't wait for you to do it again with his brother. We love you, teacher Trina. One more, your love for the kiddos is never unseen. Two years ago, our son couldn't even make two word sentences on his own and now he can have full conversations. We love you. Our son constantly says he is going to miss you the most when he starts his new school. I do this job because I love the connection I make with these kids. I have been invited to birthday parties. I have even had students ask me to ride the bus home with them so we can play fifteen minutes longer. What I despise about this district, number one, there has been a huge uptick in behavior. I have been bit, hit, spit at, and even had a desk thrown at me. Safety is a huge issue. The district would like us to leave at our quitting time. I'm to look at my teacher and say goodbye, see you tomorrow. She is trying, as she's trying to get eight to ten special ed kids to the bus by herself. As usually, there is at least one student not wanting to go home, so we wait while the other students are waiting. I am a compassionate person. I cannot leave her by herself. I have given at least fifteen minutes every day past my stop time. I want and should be compensated for all hours worked. And number two, after all these years I have given to this district, it is really disappointing and disheartening. To hear that the district is more interested in hiring new people than retaining the employees with longevity. That is a slap in the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Channing Rossi.
I can hear you. All right. First, thank you for having me, the space to speak tonight, and thank you for actually holding firm during these negotiations. I know it takes a lot of courage to see all the parents' emails, the empty schools and all the pairs who have showed up tonight. And, you know, it'd be very easy just to give into their demands, but you have all stayed the course and that's extremely admirable. I really think people need to remember that we are in a budget crisis here, all right? These are the lessons that we need our children to learn. That when a large group of people are crying out about living wages, there are more important things that we need to look into and that is things like the budget. So we have to ignore those people and look into that. No one should expect to live off part-time income, so I really appreciate that you guys have been so transparent on the bargaining website. And showing us like the actual bargaining that's been given to the PSE. It totally shows that PSEs absolutely are making twenty-eight K a year in a school year. Which, you know, you compare that to the sixty K that's pretty much needed to live in Vancouver. That's not that big of a gap. And, you know, I think parents really need to take a lesson from the board and from our other administrators. And obviously, they just need to work more. Like, you know, you have your nights, you have your weekends, you have your summers. There's plenty of hours here that you could be doing. You know, there's, it seems like a no-brainer to me that after dealing with just, you know, all these hundreds of kids of, you know, the tantrums, the fighting, the behavioral issues. Getting kicked, spit on, chairs thrown at you. You just really need to suck it up and you need to get another twenty or thirty hours in your schedule to be able to make up for that shortfall. And, you know, you'd probably still only be within about ten to fifteen K of livable wages. It's not that hard. Let's also not forget, we need these executives to keep making six-figure salaries, guys, because that's the only way we are going to get out of this deficit. Okay, we need this to run like a well-oiled business machine. It's also inspiring to know that if you work for this district for decades, you can even get up to thirty-five, thirty-six K a year. And I've even heard of some pairs who are making more than six figures somehow. It shows that if you actually have the right friends and loyalty, anything is possible in this district. I especially wanted to thank that the superintendent's messages are reminding our community that this strike is unlawful. Because it is and students need to learn that when you feel mistreated and misrepresented. The important thing to do is to obey the status quo, keep silenced and don't be disruptive. So in closing, I just want to thank you again for showing our kids what's really important in these times and in their education. It's, it's not about, you know, the wages, it's the administration, it's the, it's the budget, it's the lawyers. We need to make sure that this district is running correctly and God bless, one day if I get to thirty- God bless, one day if I get thirty years in this district, I can get a five hundred dollar bonus. That's about a penny for every hour that I've worked. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samantha Bowler.
Hi. My name is Samantha Bowler. That's my cat. It's my emotional support animal right now. Actually, thank you so much for putting this on Zoom, because I get to hug her instead. But jokes aside, my name is Samantha Bowler. I am a special education para educator at Illhee Elementary. I have made it a priority to talk to each and every one of you at some point when you have visited. And if you have not yet talked to me, I'm very happy to speak with you as soon as we return to school. I am a product of the Evergreen School District. I was in the original graduating class of the Illhee Elementary School in two thousand and one. Went to Shaheila Middle School and then graduated from Union High School in two thousand and fourteen. I had a five oh four plan. And I am so frustrated that what was once such a great district that I could proudly stand behind being an alum to has turned into what it has today. I want to tell you a little bit about what I do. I, of course, do my job as a special ed para educator. But I've also coached track. I have hosted or emceed most of the assemblies that our school puts on. I was the emcee for our talent show. I also ran the Lego Robotics Club. And when we didn't get the stipend for the Lego Robotics Club, I went to my principal and found a way to create an entirely new Lego Building Club for our students, where I personally reached out to the community and received hundreds of dollars in donations of Legos that ended up being a huge success with our kids, and I'm very excited to be able to do that with them again. I am also getting my degree in elementary education and currently working part-time, quote unquote, but using all of my energy, because I'm also tutoring, doing these after-school activities. We are the idea that you just need to work more, or you are not worth what you are putting in, is horrendous to me. I I also have a chronic illness, so there's only so much that I can do before my body will shut down. So I am giving everything to this district, and it is disappointing to see that you would rather me be replaced by some random person, because I can't survive on what you are providing now.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adra Peterson.
Good afternoon. My name is Adra Peterson. I am a one-on-one special education para educator and a twenty-twenty high school graduate from this district. I am before you today to express why I am on the line striking with my fellow coworkers, friends, and classified staff. I am here because I want to be able to pay my bills without the stress of not affording them. I also would like the option to have an apartment. Right now, I live with family, and I am very grateful for that. But once I get my check, I only have a couple hundred dollars left over, if that. And this is just me taking care of myself. I don't have kids or pets or anybody else to care for. I have fellow coworkers and friends who have to work multiple jobs in order to just pay rent and food for their families. Again, I am grateful I don't have to do that, but I would love the option to be able to afford an apartment and somewhere to live and have my own space. And I don't, I don't think that's fair to my fellow coworkers, that they have to struggle so much just to afford the basic necessities. I would love to see everyone in high-paying positions, budget, and live on our salaries to understand where we are coming from. I don't think you guys would be able to have the comfortable lifestyle that you may have now. We are not asking for super fancy luxuries. We are not asking to drive the newest car or have the biggest house. We are asking to live without stress. We are asking to afford groceries. We are asking to afford our rent. We are asking for the basic needs so that we can live. We are also asking to pay for, be paid for all hours worked. In my position, I get my kid on and off the, the school bus. And with that, with all of those minutes, that's about two hours weekly that I don't get paid, just so I make sure that my kid gets on and off the bus safely. I don't think that's fair. And how also the negotiating teams from the district also gets paid hundreds of dollars to bargain over the weekend for twenty months, twenty-one minutes worth of work that you guys posted on the district website. As a district, you posted those minutes from Sunday as a way of maybe bragging that you were bargaining in good faith. Well, it shows, all it shows is how little you care about actually bargaining in good faith. This comment is about three minutes long, and you want us to believe that you read, discussed, and planned a new proposal in this time? I don't trust that. The bargaining, the proposal you sent out last week took me just over three minutes to read, so I know you guys weren't able to do that in three minutes. This district used to be the best, but now people are pulling out their kids because they don't have the trust in the district. The levy that we passed in February was also meant for this cost of living raise. It was meant for us so that we could afford our basic needs. This district is having a hard time passing these levies because of the mistrust from the school board and the mistrust from this district. I am here because I love the kids I work with, and I know that I have made a difference in their lives. I have seen kids light up as I walk into the room, as they know that I am helping them. As a kid that gets dropped off late at school, I've come through those doors into the front office, and they were previously crying, but they see me and they light up, and they know that I'm their safe space, and they know that I am there to help them. I have seen several kids come to these strike lines with us, and they light up when they see the teachers that make a difference in their lives. If that's not us doing our job and not us making an impact in these kids' lives, I don't know what is. I think I can say for almost everyone on this call that we do this for the kids and not for the paycheck. Yes, I want to be in school, working with these amazing kids and coworkers, but I want a fair contract and fair pay. I want safety while in school. Please bargain in good faith like you guys keep saying you are. See that we have the juice, and we won't back down. We are here every day. Please listen and give us this livable wage that we are asking for. And as it has already been mentioned, thank you for turning on the sprinklers yesterday. It helped cool us off. It was getting kind of warm, and it kept us going. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julia Apple.
Can you hear me? Great, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a special education teacher at Hearthwood Elementary, and I have been with Evergreen for over twenty years. To the board, Dr. Maloney, Ms. Gomes, district bargaining team, I can't begin to imagine how difficult it is to consider increasing wages when the money coming from the federal government is unpredictable and insufficient, when funding from the state isn't enough, and when doing what's best for students costs more each year. But this could look so different. This was our new superintendent's first opportunity to show our families and community, to show Evergreen employees that she has been listening to us and that she could make the budget work and pay the people who are closest to students what they're worth. A long-drawn-out bargain that results in a contentious strike and delays school starting by over two weeks does not make a good first impression. After what this community has been through over the past eight years, with multiple superintendents leaving midterm, money wasted on severance packages, a failed levy when we have a history of consistently passing levies, two strikes since two thousand and sixteen, I thought for sure that going into this bargain, your biggest priority would have been to start repairing the damage that's been done over the years and avoid yet another strike. You say it's harming our children to delay schools, but I have to ask, what effect does it have on the community each time a disrespectful or misleading message is posted on the district's website? Is the amount of time and money it's going to take to regain the trust of this community worth the salary increases that you're rejecting? I encourage our superintendent to look at the people around her, listen to the voices in her ear, and ask herself if what she's doing aligns with her vision for this district, the vision she promised us just a few months ago. If I could address the community, parents, taxpayers, those who are finding and using their voices, I would say, your support is amazing and so appreciated. Continue to email this board, attend school board meetings, say what's on your mind. Do you agree with what they're doing? What information are they missing? Tell them. Ask questions. Call or email your elected officials in Olympia and Washington DC. Tell them that public education needs their support. Engage in making public education what it should be. Again, thank you for continuing to show your support. It means the world. If I could address my PSE colleagues, I would say you are amazing. You are beautiful, you are courageous. I'm so proud of you. Stay strong, keep fighting. You deserve this. You are worth every dollar and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jacob Smith.
All right, can y'all see and hear me? All right. All right, good. Am I ready to roll? Okay, got that. All righty. Hi, everybody. I said, I said about a month ago, burn midnight oil to get this contract done, and clearly, it's not been happening. There's been a lot of frustration, uncertainty about when Evergreen's going to start school. I've had somebody that's for the pro-union, a pro-union Democrat, say, I'm tired of these strikes, I'm for a union, but I'm tired of these strikes going on. I've had one, I've had a, somebody I went to Heritage with, they they're just thinking about pulling out their kid and going to another school district, and that we just cannot happen. And when we have shrink in the district, it affects a lot of things, funding, divisionary enlagements for going from three A to two A. It's just not gonna, it's just not very pretty. And one of the things that I want to say too is I felt this board should have had committed and said that you would not get bargaining bonuses, because I would have signed, if I was the board president, I'm signing the paperwork that says you will not be getting bargaining bonuses. BSME thirty-one K, that helps Heritage Deck get a retail student store for the other schools as well. That could get us another para educator. We could get a new Rockstar. And looking back to PSE, Deck, or Decca Student Store, it's under the PSE contract. And another thing is that, that affects, the reason why this contract's important is that for all locations, the state from area to state, if our area shrinks, we lose all locations going to state. And if our chapter's too small, we don't get delegates to vote for state or national president, because delegates are based on how big your chapter is. So if our chapter's shrinking, we're having less delegates, and how are we going to get somebody from our district to be a state? If not, we can shoot for the stars, a national officer. Let's just get this contract done, and I would encourage the board to use parliamentary procedure, AKA Robert's rule of order, to negotiate the contract rather than saying, oh, yeah, we read the contract and we did this, we did that. Because if the EA contract's a hundred and sixty pages, PSE is probably roughly half of that. There's no way you can read like the whole contract in like twenty minutes, sorry, or even four. You know, just freeze, just commit to freezing salaries, get this contract done, just burn midnight oil. A little bit frustrated that school's not starting, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Nichols.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Lynn Nichols, and I'm a licensed physical therapist assistant for the district. I spoke last time. It was on a very specific topic, although it affects many and all of us. This one is about the longevity that many of us have been here through the thick and thin of COVID and have watched this district go through several different, difficult years, struggling. I specifically am talking about something that has been bargained for us people that have been here for over thirty years. And I brought it up, it was brought to your attention, that it had been taken off the table for negotiations. And I do appreciate that it was put back on and there was an agreement for bonuses. And I guess I'm still struggling and irritated, along with my peers, that this did not follow the typical precedent. I appreciate the bonus. It was a five hundred one-time bonus. But after working here for thirty-three years, I truly believe that all of us that have been here for over thirty years deserve that two percent jump that we consistently got at ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, and twenty-five years. So to be here now after thirty years and get a five hundred dollar bonus, it's, it's actually kind of insulting. It seems not, I understand the budget constraints, but again, this does not seem like an offer that demonstrates retention for me and my peers, especially speaking just loudly that it is time for us to leave and that you don't appreciate our years of services. This five hundred dollars works out to about forty-one dollars a month. We'll pay taxes on it. We have insurance increases. And by the time we get that bonus, we might be able to buy a couple of cups of coffee, if that. So, you know, basically, it was tossing out a bone. We got a little bit of kibble, and it just feels really disrespectful. It's pitiful, really. There was a precedent in there for two percent. And there really is only a handful of us that are at this level of commitment with the district. And to us, it's truly a slap in our face. You know, Battleground could get this done, and they did it at three percent. We're huge. It's a large district. And it just goes to show that you guys are not respecting our longevity, our commitment, and the years that we have given to you and the knowledge and wisdom that we have been able to provide to the newbies that have come on. I'm a licensed physical therapist assistant. I work with PTs. I've worn many, many hats over the years, and I have worked, I can tell you, above and beyond what is in my job description.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Gilbert.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Andrew Gilbert. Yeah, good evening, members of the board and superintendent. I'm a parent of a fourth grade student at York Elementary. Our schools have now been closed. I have read the district proposal, and I have seen the bargaining logs, and I understand that the severe financial reality that our district is facing. I've seen sixty million dollars in budget reductions over the last three years and resulting in elimination of over four hundred staff positions. I also know that you are projecting a further twenty-six million in reductions over the next three years, including shortfalls of over eleven million dollars for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. As a taxpayer, I expect financial or fiscal responsibility, and I do not expect you to agree to a contract that ignores the reality and leads to even deeper cuts for our students. However, my child's right to an education is not negotiable, and right now, that right is being violated. I am here to demand action because the current strategy of waiting for a breakthrough in negotiations has failed. Your own communication shows a process that is not working. The public is watching, and we see a stalemate that is only hurting our children. My first demand is regarding the loss of instructional time. The last time this district had to make up significant days, the solution was to add five minutes to the end of the school day. Let me be clear, five extra minutes of a tired classroom at the end of the day does not equal a full day of learning. It is an accounting trick that does not serve our children. I am demanding a commitment from this board that every single day lost to this strike will be made up with a that every single day lost to this strike will be made up with a full equivalent instructional day added to the end of the school year. Our children are owed nothing less. My second and more urgent demand is for the board to change its strategy. The striking employees is currently under contract for this school year. We see other districts in our region successfully negotiating while keeping schools open. Why is Evergreen failing where others are succeeding? This is not a legal, legally protected activity. We expect you, our elected representatives, to use every tool at your disposal, even an injunction through the court to end this legal strike and reopen our schools. Finally, to all the parents watching tonight, and I didn't realize this was gonna be such a teacher-oriented event, um but all the parents out there that feel powerless like I do, I would like to give you specific constructive action we can all take together. The leadership of the Evergreen PSE Union needs to hear directly from the families they are harming. I'm asking every one of you to join me in emailing the union president, Mindy Topher Cooper. Google will produce her email. Use it. Email her and the entire Evergreen PSE Union Executive Board tonight. This message is simple. End this strike, return to work under your current contract and negotiate without holding our children's education hostage. Let make our voices heard, not just here, but directly to the union leadership. Let's demand that they do right by our children and to the board, we are past the point of asking, we are demanding a resolution. What is the plan beyond just waiting for another bargaining session to get the kids back in classroom this week? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Hadad.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um hello, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um I am Adam Hadad and I have gone to school in this district since kindergarten. This is my second year teaching in the Evergreen School District and I would like to tell you a little bit about my history in the district to give you a better understanding of my point. My point. Before I was a teacher, I was a substitute and before that I was a para educator. I became a para educator towards the end of COVID when we were reintegrating schools. In the classroom, uh it was me and one other para educator. The teacher was at home videoing in due to health concerns. I noticed right away how different the behaviors and circumstances were compared to when I was in school. I was grateful to have a job and was privileged enough to not worry about how much I was paid. I was concerned by my fellow educator who was older than seventy, if I remember correctly. I wonder why they would put their life in danger to be here and assume they just loved educating and loved being there for the students. After that year, I eventually went on to substitute and had many experiences. Yet it was my time as a long-term substitute at the middle school in this district that really stuck with me. While I was a long-term substitute, I essentially worked as a transition coach and security and got to see a different side of the education system. In one instance, I had to guard a student from being attacked by others. I sat in that room for at least one hour where at one point I had to hold the door closed so the other students could not harm the one I was guarding. I was not deterred by these experiences. In fact, they made me wanna make a difference more. So when I became a teacher, I was excited. Yet I realized that I was in the classroom all day instead of being out there with the transition coaches and security. I wondered what major behaviors were happening that they handled so our school could function. I was very relieved when a para educator in my classroom was able to take a student aside and help them learn or give them a break, making sure I could teach my other twenty-seven students. While all my recollections are para educator, transition culture, security focused, I will mention the bus drivers who worked overtime so my soccer players could get home safely. I will mention uh uh the maintenance who kept my room clean and cleaned up throw-up and the media tech assistants, assistant to who? Who do the work of a librarian, keeping a communal space for students to create community in. Apologies to you that have been threatened and harassed. I don't think anybody should be. But um apologies on my base. Professionals in the PC I did not mention. In all my recollections, if there is no PSE staff, there is no school or at least a very safe school. In my ignorance, I do not understand why administrators are paid so much when it is the educate educators putting their mental and physical health on the line and not sitting in an office not away from students. I apologize, the board, we're threatened, but when I or another staff are threatened by our students, we do not get to choose to have class online. This leads to my ultimate point. Why does the board uh why does the district villainize its workers? I understand that by trying to road public support, you're hoping the PSE will stop and go back to work, but how can then you turn to around and ask the public to support a levy? We are already in an anti-education climate and by not negotiating in good faith, I wonder, does the board of directors actually know what is going on in these talks? I certainly don't and I would like more transparency. But in the meantime, it makes me wonder who is being a useful idiot, who is making a positive change and who is actively working against our district's future? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. The next item on our agenda is the board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve tonight's board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Director Grunwald moves to adopt our board consent agenda as presented, signed by Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. The next item on our agenda is our superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Director Perkins moves to adopt our superintendent consent agenda as presented, seconded by Director Boca Negra. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. opposed? So moved. The last item on our agenda tonight is board comments.
I guess I get us started. Um I wanna thank everybody tonight who um gave testimony for the board. Um we are listening. We are reading your emails. Um we are wanting resolution of this. We want our students back in the classroom. Um we do value all of our employees. And um we want everybody to keep working hard to get this resolved.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all, everybody that spoke tonight. Um I know emotions are high and no one's really happy at this point. I do wanna um try and quell the fear of a repeat of the supplemental contracts that was paid out back in twenty twenty-three during the EEA um contract negotiations. Um it's come up repeatedly, came up from a few comments tonight and we've gotten several emails about it. I know Dr. Maloney has stated publicly that there will not be any monetary uh supplemental contracts and she's assured uh each of us on the board that that's the case and I take her at her word and um yeah, um I think we can move past that concern and um and just work hard on getting a a deal done here. Uh compromise and you know, just I think that we're starting to continually now bargaining good faith and hopefully a agreement, tentative agreement can be can occur soon. And um again, once again, hoping that future bargaining, we can have an open bargaining where um everything's transparent. I believe in transparency uh and the more the better. So in in bargaining, that would be a big help and would just I think stop a lot of the, you know, finger pointing and um yeah, I think it would help. Uh so thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Gary. The part about the uh supplemental contracts, um I know that Dr. Maloney uh actually assured us very early on in her uh tenure as interim superintendent that that was not in her plan. Um and it's good to, um it's good for us to publicly recognize that. Uh she has assured us that. Going for this bargain. I appreciate the comments that have been presented tonight. And emotions really are high. Uh and I'm sensitive to that and uh and concern for the uh uh ongoing trust relationships um that could be damaged uh or have been damaged. The work will be to repair the relationships uh going forward once the tentative agreement and ratification has been reached. I'm looking forward to doing that work.
I would just like to quickly address the pivot to an online format for this evening. Um in just the optics that it looks like we went behind our computer screens. Um and as it had been alluded to earlier, we have never backed down from being present in front of our community members to accept these, you know, our citizens' comments in person. There has been a lot of heightened security concerns that have happened. And I can speak for myself in that I was not in a place nor I was I comfortable in creating a space that our presence in created um an unsafe environment, not just for our staff, but the community members that were in attendance. The the conversation was never around really our safety. It was around the safety of the people that have, that we have opened a space for. Um my fear was that we would be creating a a more in an environment that just created even more uh of of not good feelings and I just didn't, I I for one was not okay with creating a space for someone else to get hurt um because of us. And that is one of the biggest reasons why we pivot to Zoom tonight. And I just wanna say that we, it was not to hide behind this computer screen or to hide from our community. It was to make sure that there was not an environment that created harm to people in their rooms.
Thank you, Director Grunwald. Thank you for going into more detail about how we were thinking about making that decision. I want to say that I appreciate people coming tonight and sharing with us, sharing their experiences. Our board deeply values our classified staff. Your contributions to our school district are measurable and to our students, our community. We understand also that families are carrying a heavy burden with this strike continuing to go on. Students are missing school. And we are deeply committed as a board to resolving this. We are meeting daily to keep track of what's happening to make sure that our district is bargaining in good faith, which we believe they are. And we want to make sure that we continue to put students first with all of our decisions. And that as a board is what I believe we are all doing every day. I really hope that very soon we can come to a tentative agreement and as Director Perkins put it, start rebuilding our relationships. The relationships we've built in this district are important and we value and appreciate all of our staff members. And we again appreciate everybody coming and speaking tonight. Thank you. The time is seven thirty-three PM and our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.